The legislature is back from recess. As we agreed on earlier, we're back now to bill number 70-38COR by Senator Sinagastin. And the last time we left, we were still with Senator Perez. And you were still, okay, so you still, ma'am, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good evening to my colleagues. So before the bill was set aside, I was proffering an amendment. What it states is that GDOE shall establish fees and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law found in chapter nine, title five, Guam Code annotated for the implementation of this section. So again, maybe just to recap some of the things I've said, there are many nuances and issues that were raised during the public hearing, one of them being who owns the land? And I guess that would also lead to the question about who would benefit from these leases. So we know GDOE operates facilities, but the land itself may be CLTC or non-CLTC owned. So again, I think regulations are critical in determining how we address, how the money would be divvied up. Also, there may be issues with liabilities. So once a school is de-commissioned, so as I understand, there are some classrooms that were funded by GURA, and should the school be de-commissioned, there's a likelihood that we would have to repay back the funds that were used to implement those Head Start classrooms. So things like that, there's a lot of nuances that need to be vetted, and I think that would help support, strengthen this bill, and I ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So we're going to go ahead and start with the first amendment. Again, it is on page three, lines nine to 11. Okay? And it's AB 70 SFPL 9-11 P3. Okay? And it is to just strike out the words "is authorized to." Okay? On the amendment, are there anybody, anybody wishing to speak on the amendment? Ma'am, gentle lady from Zonia, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you. I stand in support of this amendment, and I think it's necessary because since the 23rd Guam Legislature, that's many, many years ago, it's, they have been, GDOE has been authorized to rent out school facilities, especially after hours, for outside use. But they were authorized back then to do a fee schedule, and they never did, as far as I can tell from the testimony that was given. And so this is mandating them now to establish these fees and regulations pursuant to the AAA, which I also support because that's going to give some transparency to this process, and we're going to see what kind of rules that they're making, and the public will be able to judge for themselves whether they are being fair in their application. So I support this amendment to mandate that they establish fees and regulations pursuant to the AAA.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the amendment, gentlemen from Ipana, you're recognized, sir.
Si dos masia, Mr. Speaker, and buenas noches, Maraquita, to the people of Guam watching us. Good evening, and thank you for watching on our YouTube and our TV stream. Certainly rise in support of the amendment. In fact, a good senator from Baragada has a bunch of really great amendments. As I support the intent of the bill, what I believe the intent of the bill should be is to give the Guam Department of Education not just the authority to lease out their facilities to generate revenue, but to give them a real authority. And so with this amendment, which mandates they shall establish fees and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law, I'm hoping to see more consistency than what's currently contained in the bill, because on one side of our mouth, we're saying, here you go, GDOE, we're going to give the authority to lease out your facilities. But on the other side of our mouth, we're being very inconsistent in saying, okay, you can lease out your facilities, but it has to be at the very least 90% of the appraisal value. But if you're a government agency, then it only has to be 60%. And if you're a charter school, then never mind, don't worry, the legislature is going to take care of the rent via appropriation. So I'm hoping as we get deeper into the discussion on the bill that some of those inconsistencies can be rectified. But, you know, more importantly, I'm hoping that GDOE in establishing these fees and these regulations do kind of bring a little more equity and sense to the, not just the ways that they're going to lease these facilities, but as well as the costs at which they're going to lease them for. So si dos masia, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, gentlemen from Gego, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in support of this amendment, but I just want to make one clarification of the previous speaker. It's on page three, line one. If the prospective leasing is an education institution like Charter School, no, it's no less than 60% of the appraisal value. Because that was the issue before this bill was sent back to committee. We need to identify no less than. With that, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in support of the amendment.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senator wishing to speak on the amendment? No other senator? Senator Perez, you want to close? She waives the close, okay. Any objections to the amendment? Any objections to the amendment? No objections to the amendment? Amendment pass. Senator Perez, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, thank you to my colleagues for their support. So the next amendment feeds off of that passed amendment, and this would amend, aims to amend subsection B of the, of section two of the bill. So what the, what it currently states is that revenues, sorry. So yeah, the amendment I'm reading, going to read is line 17 to 21, page two. And so this would amend subsection B of section two of the bill. And so what it reads is the revenue collected from the lease agreement shall be made pursuant to regulations promulgated by the Administrative Adjudication Act located in chapter nine, title five. Funds received by the Guam Department of Education shall be used for the maintenance, renovation, and capital improvement projects. So this is just to ensure there's consistency in the bill. Should the regulations include payments to other entities? And whereas, as it currently is written, all the, all the revenues are going to go to GDOE. And again, that doesn't mean all the revenues can or may, it may, considering how the regulations are developed. So we don't want to leave entities out if they are due some sort of compensation, and it's really up to the parties to determine whether they're going to waive those, those revenues or not. So it's a process that would have to be, we have to, I guess, abide by that process of promulgating the rules pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Act. So yeah, in short, I just want to bring consistency to the bill.
On the amendment, okay, it's labeled AB 70 SFPL 17-21 P2. It's to amend page, line 17 to 21 on page two. Any senator wishing to speak on the amendment? Any senator wishing to speak on the amendment? Gentleman lady from Ipana, I mean, Zonia?
Yes, I stand in support of this amendment, too. It maintains the uses of these proceeds or these revenues for maintenance, renovation, and capital improvement projects. That doesn't change at all. All it, it makes it very clear that these will be governed by the rules promulgated through the AAA, which we just adopted. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, can we take a one-minute recess?
One-minute recess. Legislature is back from recess. Senator Lai, you still have the floor?
Si dos masia. So I would just ask if we could amend this to restore the language back that says lease payments shall be deposited into an account separate and apart from the general fund and may be expended upon approval by adoption of a resolution by the Guam Board of Education. And just take that sentence, restore it, take out the strike through, but put it at the bottom of the paragraph. That way, we maintain that it's separate from the general fund.
Understood. Everybody understand that amendment? What they're going to do is the strikeout of lease payments shall be deposited into an account separate and apart from the general fund and may be expended upon approval by the, by the adoption of a resolution by the Guam Board of Education. Reinstate that language, but put that language after the last words in the, in the last sentence, capital improvement projects. Okay? That way, there's, it flows, the, the other sentence flows. Do we understand? Gentlemen from Gego, sir, you're recognized. On the amendment to the amendment.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I thank you for the author of restoring that, because I was already, I was already in position to object to the amendment initially, because it just didn't make sense. This is for DOE. I don't know why we're talking about other entity. The DOE is going to create the rules and regulations, but we want to make sure that the money does get deposited in a separate account, and that the Board of Education is involved, because if you don't get them involved, then maybe she, the authors should consider eliminating them from there. And with that, I stand in support of this amendment to the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. On the amendment to the amendment, on the amendment to the amendment, any other senator wishing to, gentle lady from Aguej, ma'am, you're recognized. No, no, use the, use.
I actually am glad that the previous speaker, or I'm sorry, Senator Trulahi restored that language, because this was actually comments from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research in the fiscal note to create this separate account.
Thank you. On the amendment to the amendment, gentle lady from Baragada, ma'am, you're.
Yes, I think the sponsor of this amendment to the amendment, I support it. Si dos masia.
On the amendment to the amendment, any other senator wishing to speak? Gentlemen from Ipana, sir, you're recognized.
Si dos masia, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to just rise in support of the amendment. And I don't know if my good colleague from Baragada got overzealous with the strike through, but a good catch with, from the gentle lady from Jotniya, so rise in support of the amendment, because it does reinstate that special account, and then further that the funds are going to the maintenance, renovation, and capital improvements is also a very nice cherry on top, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
In defense of the gentle lady from Baragada, she just wanted to make sure it flowed properly. Okay? On the amendment to the amendment, okay, are there any objections to the amendment to the amendment? No objections? So order, now the amendment as amended, now the amendment as amended, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment as amended? No speakers? Senator Perez, you want to close? Waive the close, okay. Are there any objections to the amendment as amended? No objections, so order. Senator Perez, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, there's a series of amendments that I have. Maybe what I'll start with the SFP P3, and it's roman numeral three. So to amend the bill to add subsections, and of course, we can allow legal and clerks to change the numbering or lettering. So solicitations shall include a local economic participation factor, awarding points for Guam-based small business participation, local hiring plans, and student internship, apprenticeship commitments of GDOE pathways. And then leases may include in-kind consideration valued by the appraiser and credited only upon 20% of annual rent. So the point about the first one is we want to give, I guess, bonus or points for those that are Guam-based businesses that also can include student involvement as well as local hiring. So we want to encourage that type of enterprise. One thing that I could, I see as, you know, that we want to make sure that we can leverage these resources, not only for revenue, but what the businesses can offer for curriculum. So one of the things that I've been pushing for is pre-apprenticeships within the high schools, so by the time they graduate, they can enter an apprenticeship program in which they can make a living, a potential living, a livelihood. And so it's really about spurring, you know, workforce development, too, at the same time. So the benefits are not just revenue generation, but also benefits to our student population who can, who have access to real-world learning, which is very, one of the factors in increasing student performance. Regards to leases with in-kind consideration, so this would also, you know, in, I guess, in lieu of, of revenue, if they're able to, let's say, upgrade the facilities, you know, to make it functional and maintained, this is one of the considerations that could be included in the lease of these properties. So to give some sort of flexibility when we are leasing out these properties to businesses.
If you don't mind, let's take a one-minute recess, one-minute recess. One-minute recess. Back from ESS. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So if I can clarify that this, instead of saying to amend the bill, the recommendation was to add a new subsection to section 3135. So it takes away the confusion about the lettering and the order of it.
Understood. Do we understand that? Okay? So on the amendment, on the amendment, are there any senators wishing to speak on the amendment? This is amendment SFP 3. Okay? Although it says subsection H and subsection I, it's going to be recognized by the clerks as new subsections. If passed.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, mister. Yes, sir.
So in other words, the letter J and the K and everything else, that's all kinds of letters, doesn't matter?
No, and what, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look at what the letters are, as passed, then...
As it, if it passes, it'll get in the order, it needs to be in order, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So can I comment now on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, we just passed, with my support, the fees and regulations. Now we're gonna tell them, the legislation shall include, now we're telling them how their fees and regulations should be written, and that if they have a lease, may include in-kind 20%. Mr. Speaker, I object to this amendment. We're now, we're getting into how they're gonna put the program together. You want the fees and regulations by AAA, let them handle it. Then participate in their hearing and ask comments. Maybe you need to consider this, maybe you need to consider this, and we can go down the line, but I object to this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. On the amendment, gentlemen from Tumwin, sir, you recognize?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, and I concur with the retiring speaker. I think if we're gonna go down the road of having established already, that there are large parameters that are set already through the AAA process, through what we've done to refine the bill, I actually think we're entering into kind of, Mr. Speaker, the non-German-ness of basically constructing lease conditions, and I just don't think that that's the operation of what we should be doing here, you know? But notwithstanding, I mean, I know that we've had other comments on other bills, on stacks and stacks of amendments, I'm sure we'll go through these stacks as well, no preferential treatment involved, friend or, you know, having had differences with others, but I just gotta say that I think that's where we're going with this, so I also will stand in objection to this amendment, and I think the series really is unnecessary based on what we're gonna do for what this bill already calls for and the other amendments that we've prepared. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, gentlemen from EPE, you recognize?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in the strongest support for this amendment, which I don't think is not germane. I mean, in this bill, we're telling the Guam Department of Education, you could lease your facilities at the minimum 90% of the appraisal value, but if you're an instrument of the government of Guam or a charter school, it's 60% of the value, and if you're a charter score entity of the government of Guam, it's 60% of the value, and then the legislature is gonna take care of footing the bill for that. I think these conditions are actually way more reasonable than those that we're imposing on GDOE with this bill, and they're actually in line with what the Guam Department of Education is already doing and is also trying to expand upon, and talking about these internships and these apprenticeships. If you pay attention to how these are tracking around the world, we've started, started these internships, these apprenticeships, mostly in the high school level, but now they're creeping into middle school with STEM and STEAM, and you see in other jurisdictions around the world, sometimes they're even starting kids off in the upper grades of elementary schools, so that they can, you know, really leave the public school system with a skillset that allows them to immediately enter the job market, because sometimes with the high school thing, you get the four years, then you still need a couple here, three there, after you graduate. So this is absolutely, totally in line with what the Guam Department of Education is already doing, and I can see in my mind how different entities occupy certain parts of schools, whether it's, you know, GCC and how they used to occupy the automotive shop down at Southern High, home of the Toninos. Or, you know, you look at the programs with the Guam Contractors Association, I mean, this amendment allows the opportunity for those types of entities to go into a facility and provide meaningful contributions in making sure that we turn out kids who are realistically ready for the real job markets out there, because not everyone's gonna be a lawyer, doctor, lord knows, we need those, but there's a lot of great careers and opportunities for our kids that involve, you know, getting your hands dirty, plumbing, electrician, all these types of jobs, construction, if you Google like some of the best-paying jobs, these are the jobs that they're talking about. So this amendment allows GDOE to pursue these types of agreements, which would absolutely benefit not just the Guam Department of Education through the revenue that's generated, but also our public school student populations. And, you know, normally, I'm not a supporter of offsetting the rent with in-kind considerations, but if we follow this kind of train of thought of what the intent of this amendment is, which is to open up these internships and these apprenticeships in a leased school facility, then I'm already imagining, you know, getting the kids to do real-life, real-time projects at these facilities, to help maintain them, or to renovate them, to otherwise upgrade them, and then we offset that from the cost of the rent. So absolutely support this amendment. I believe it's, again, absolutely germane to what GDOE is already doing, and it doesn't infringe upon GDOE's authority, and it doesn't disrespect their ability to lease out their facilities. And I actually think it's milder than what the bill currently proposes, which is kind of this willy-nilly, you know? No, no, I'll do respect to the good author from GIGO, but you know, it's like, if you're this, you're that, if you're this, you pay that, if you're GovGuam and you're in, then don't worry, the legislature's gonna appropriate the rent, so I support the amendment, Mr. Speaker, and I urge kindly my colleagues to do the same. Sidozmasi.
Thank you very much, sir. On the amendment, general lady from EPE, or Jotniasso, I keep getting it wrong. Jotniasso, you recognize?
Yeah, I find this amendment to be reasonable, both of them. It's, it seems to me like we're putting into this type of procurement, which is almost the opposite of our normal procurement process, where we are leasing from private, the government is leasing from private facilities. We do give points in that competition, that solicitation for Guam-based small businesses. So now that we are going to lease out our own facilities, I think it's very consistent with our current philosophies, our current government practices, to also give that type of benefit in the solicitation to Guam-based small businesses. Not, doesn't restrict DOE, it just gives them kind of a parameter of how they're going to, to, who gets preference in these, in use of these facilities, and I think that that's reasonable. The other one about the local hiring plans, this is something else that the legislature has required or given benefit to for, when judging QC's or other government programs, if they have local hires, that, that, that's a plus for all of us, always. So I think it's very consistent for the legislature to put these types of factors in, because this is not a procurement that is normally done by GDOE, where they are leasing out their facilities, it's normally the opposite. And so, so it's kind of like an open field, there are no rules, so this just adds some very basic parameters. The part about the in-kind consideration is just, it says "may," so it leaves it to GDOE discretion, and without this in the bill, they could not do that at all, they would be prohibited. So this, again, would be up to their policies, and I like that it includes the word agreed upgrades, that's key, and that means if, they're not gonna be giving benefit to upgrade it to something that makes it completely unusable for GDOE in the future, if they might need it. So they can keep the param, you know, they have a lot of discretion to say, we want you to upgrade the aircon, as opposed to changing it so that it can never ever be used for a classroom again. And this keeps all of that discretion with GDOE. It's a limited in-kind consideration that is allowed, but it is, it is allowed, it's not mandated, it's allowed for GDOE, so I think giving them this discretion is good, and giving these parameters up here on the top, local business, why not? Local hires, absolutely, that should be a preference. We've made that a preference for all other solicitations for the government. So I appreciate this amendment, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, gentlemen from Tavol, you had your hands raised earlier? Senator Gumbatato? No? On the amendment, on the amendment. Okay, there has been an objection to the amendment. You wanna close? Yes, ma'am?
All right, so yes, thank you for those that rose in support of this amendment, and I think what's critical, as, you know, we're talking about GDOE properties, we want to also provide opportunities for students to imagine other careers. So what I understand is that students tend to gravitate towards careers where they're, they have exposure to, and so if we can cultivate this type of incubator approach in using these facilities, I think this would not only help the businesses themselves, but also the school, GDOE. And this is something that's within their, their school plan, their five-year school plan, that they wanted to increase the amount of workforce readiness for their students. And we see also in the States, the success of magnet schools. So magnet schools have specific curriculum that are geared towards industries, and so in Guam, we know that, according to Dr. Razan Jones at the latest SES meeting, is that Guam is going through a transformation economically, and we need the workforce to, to, to be there to support that change. And so this type of change can be transformative at this level. One of the things that is expected to be a part of our economic development or diversification is technology. And so we know the young people gravitate towards technological expertise, and they are more adept at it than many of us, many of us adults. And so imagine, imagine that these schools cannot only access, have access to this technology, but they can become part of the new workforce. It is said that the jobs of tomorrow don't exist today, and I believe that this, this is an opportunity to not only, not only provide GDOE much-needed money, but also much-needed curriculum support, and for Guam as a whole. And I ask my colleagues to, you know, reconsider this, that this is not a unreasonable ask to include this for commercial properties, right? This is a commercial venture, and in fact, there are businesses out there that are looking for these type of workers, and by my calculations, 30% of the workforce don't go on to college. We have also a pool of people on Guam that don't seek work, a large pool. And so we really need to invigorate our workforce development, and this is one tool that we can use, and I ask my colleagues to reconsider any kind of reservations they might have. So thank you, and I ask for their support. Sidozmasi.
Thank you very much. There has been an objection to this amendment. There has been an objection to this amendment, so therefore, all senators, okay, in favor of this amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion fails. Amendment fails. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Okay. I guess the other amendment that I would like to proffer is on P3, so I don't know if everybody sees that, page three. So maybe the, to add a new subsection to the bill to read, "The Guam Department of Education GDOE is authorized to enter into commercial leases of surplus GDOE real property where such use does not impair current or planned instructional capacity within three school years, and produces a net revenue to support maintenance, renovation, and capital improvement of school facilities." And then, "Commercial lease means a lease to a private party for revenue-generating activity including retail, services, offices, light, commercial, campus-compatible enterprises. Adult-oriented gambling and cannabis businesses are prohibited." So again, this provides some sort of guardrails, because as you know, the superintendent, you know, this is, he mentioned that he might actually utilize a private realtor to rent out these properties, and, but because the bill stands as it is, as regards to who's gonna, they have government employees in the bill that would oversee the solicitation, I think it's important to put in these guardrails to ensure that GDOE's interests come first and foremost, and that we prohibit these activities that are not suitable for our youth, and I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, gentlemen from GIGO, sir, you recognize?
Simple question for the author of the amendment. I kinda like, kinda like it a little bit, but I just need more explanation of, "One does not impair current or planned instructional capacity within three school years." If they got a plan, why would they even listed as a, subject to lease? I'm just trying to understand that, and I agree that it shouldn't impair what DOE wants to do, but if it's surplus, that means they don't have a need, normally that's normally how it works. Okay, and maybe she can explain that a little bit better, because I kinda like what is written here, especially when it says, "Adult-oriented gambling and cannabis businesses are prohibited." Thank you. Perfect, because it's in a school campus. But, "Does not impair current or planned instructional capacity within three school years." Three school years is pretty far out, so I wouldn't, I mean, if I was in, when I was in the board, when we planned things five years out, we know what's gonna be empty and what's gonna be used, so I'm just trying to make sure that, I have no problem with it so far, but she can just explain it.
Will the, will the author yield to the inquiry?
Can I get a moment's recess?
Let's take a moment's recess.
Thank you.
Back from recess. Senator Perez?
Thank you for that recess, Speaker. So after talking with the sponsor of the bill, I think what was, I would like to make an amendment to this amendment at this time, if that's possible, to strike out the word Because I think the question was, it might, yeah, generally, I guess the concern was that normally schools should have a plan. And I think once it's surplus, it's surplus. So it does, it kind of conflicts with the other language in the amendment. Surplus is in the second line. So it's authorized to enter into commercial leases of GDOE real property where such use does not impair current or planned instructional capacity.
Okay. On the amendment to the amendment, gentleman from Jiggle?
Mr. Speaker, I support the amendment now with that, with that striking. Thank you.
Okay. So let's deal with the amendment to the amendment first, to strike out surplus. Any, any objections? No objections? Okay. Now the amendment as amended. Now the amendment as amended.
Mr. Speaker, I support the amendment now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment as amended? Going once. Gentleman from Epe, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sidus Massey. I just want to commend the author for, it was a great catch on the second half of the amendment, which prohibits adult-oriented gambling and cannabis businesses from leasing out these DOE facilities. I just want to commend her, it was a great catch and we definitely dodged a bullet on that one. That would have been front page. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the amendment as amended. On the amendment as amended. Any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment as amended? Going once. Going twice. Senator Perez, you willing, you want to speak on the amendment as amended to close it? No? Okay. Any objections to the amendment as amended? Any objections? No objections? Sordid. Senator Perez, you still got the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So this other amendment is SFP, line nine, page three. And to add a new subsection to the bill, or sorry, section 3135, it reads, "All property appraisals shall be made by an appraiser licensed pursuant to chapter 30, title 22, Guam Code Annotated." So again, you know, the bill does state appraisals and we all assume it's going to be a licensed appraiser, but just to be absolutely clear, we want to make sure that GDOE, when they go out for solicitations, actually seek a licensed appraiser. So I ask for my colleague's support on this.
On the amendment, AB 70, SFP, L9, P3, okay, to amend line nine, page three, is to add a new section, "Three, all property appraisals shall be made by an appraiser licensed pursuant to chapter 30, title 22, Guam Code Annotated." Okay? Any discussion on this amendment? Gentleman from Jiggle? You're good? Any other discussion from? No? Okay. Any, any objections to this amendment? No objections to this amendment? Sordid. Your honor, all, Senator Perez, you want to go?
Well, they speak too soon, right? So here's another amendment. I know there, this is just for conversation, I guess, or debate, but this is a P3, Roman numeral two. It's to add a new subsection. "The Board shall provide an annual lease utilization plan showing candidate sites, anticipated timelines, planned use for funds, submitted to ELS, LTO, and Guam for each fiscal year." I know this may be kind of sensitive, so considering that we are talking about DOE schools, actually, maybe I'll just not proffer this. I apologize.
Okay. You, so you join this amendment?
Like it? Okay, sorry. I'll just, maybe I'll, I'll leave it open for discussion at this point, but really the idea is that, you know, we want GDOE to think big, right? Think outside the box. How are they going to leverage their properties for the maximum revenue, maximum benefits? And so that's what this use utilization plan, again, GDOE is not the experts in leasing properties. And so encouraging them or, or requiring them actually to think about what they plan to do and maybe that's an opportunity to envision what they can do and for their, for their students. Like I said in, in earlier, that, you know, workforce development is something that's so needed here on this island for economic development, diversification. And our students are crying for relevance and to have access and exposure to careers that not, they don't normally have access to, means a lot. It opens up doors, it opens, it opens up opportunities for them. And that is what wealth truly is. This is an untapped human, untapped resource in our island is the human resource, is the minds of our youth who have the capacity to achieve much great things than maybe what we can achieve in our lifetime. So I think, you know, helping and encouraging GDOE to think about the bigger picture is and the importance of this amendment, and I ask for my colleague's support. Sidus Massey.
Thank you. On the amendment, labeled AB 70, SFP, P3, Roman numeral two, II. On the amendment, hang on, Senator, hang on, sir. Senator Sinagastin, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, looking at this amendment, kind of, and the reason why I say that is because we just passed the other amendment that says the Department of Education is authorized to enter into commercial lease, means, commercially means to a private party for revenue generating activity, including retail. You know, folks, for people that are in business, if you lease your property, you need to know who's leasing it and for what. And when you open your property for lease, you identify the parameters, the restriction. No gambling, no adult-oriented, no cannabis. So the Board shall provide an annual lease utilization plan. I don't know how, are they going to give you every year? We're still renting it. I, it's not comfortable with that. I originate all the parameters already there and I just don't see a need for it. A lease utilization plan showing candidate sites. If, if we all remember correctly, when they were identifying Posme, Chief Brody, and some schools closing, that was all planned out, way out. And then they started going backwards because they identified they couldn't just do it right away. Then they end up with only two schools. We don't know if there's any more schools that are going to be closing. But with that, I've just got some reservation with the lease utilization plan, showing candidate Boards should write an annual lease utilization plan. I'm just, the planned use of funds, it's going to get a big bill, repair, maintenance, anticipated timeline? Just not comfortable with it at this point. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So are you registering an objection?
I'm at that urge, I'm at that point, but not yet.
Okay.
I'll wait until we hear from anyone else who wants to speak on it.
All right. Gentleman from Timuning, sir, you recognize?
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, I concur with the retiring speaker. You know, I know that we try to do things down here, particularly reports and the like coming to legislature, and a lot of times that's absolutely necessary. I think we're getting into the point of delving to the, by giving these mandates to the board where I could tell you, we're talking about these interests in whatever lease proposals are going to come forward and the businesses or other educational entities and the expansion of the ability to help our students and, and create workforce development. Mr. Speaker, we have a trades academy. We have a GCC. We have programs right now in our schools for mechanics and different, there is opportunities that abound that we need to continue to expand that we already have. That's why we have charter schools right now, Mr. Speaker, is because we had to go outside of where the traditional establishments were. Here's what I don't want to see, Mr. Speaker. As a original resident of Timuning and caring for properties there and my other home in Sinehanya, but spend most of my time in Timuning right now, it pains me every time I drive by Brody and I drive by LBJ. You know what's happening, Mr. Speaker? There's mold continuing to grow on the walls and the roofs and the grass is going up and up and up. And I get texts from family and friends, hey, there's thoughts about doing this and doing that and doing whatever. And I'm glad this bill is back on the floor right now because it's going to be a shame for us to not have established at least the parameters to make sure that we don't just have mold and grass growing buildings all over the place because DOE has taken its opportunity to do its job to cross-level from the reduction of 36,000 students down to approximately 26, maybe 24,000. And what are we left with? Now we got to be left with opportunities. I don't think any of these companies are going to be non-imaginable and our government's going to be non-imaginable and our board's going to be lack of imagination as well. I, I'm not necessarily saying the ideas aren't great, but sometimes I, I, I really wonder how much and how far we go to utilization plans and things coming to the legislature. Why do we have a board? Why are we giving the board the opportunity to do this? Do they lack imagination with the rules and regs, promulgation, everything else? Are, are we like, kind of the smartest guys in the room here? I don't think so. I don't think we always need reports. I think we need to give them a leeway to do what they need to do. Give them the tools to make it work. But I'm just saying, Mr. Speaker, I really, 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 really mean this. Sometimes we get meticulous on things that we want done that make it complicated and, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to watch the grass grow, the mold grow, and no revenue grow and no opportunities grow if we get a little bit over our skis. So I will register stern objection. I don't think it's necessary. I think there's opportunities for us to communicate with the board and if need be, step in if we see some sort of parameters that we are going out from, but I don't know. I, I'm, I'm getting a little leery of a lot of the reports that have to come down here for things that I believe we have the talent and the imagination and we need to give them the tools now to move, especially with the schools that have been closed and not create a liability for them because that's what they got right now. In fact, Mr. Speaker, I was disturbed and I want to put this on the record tonight and we're going to have to investigate this and find out. I was told by a board member that there is work being undone on classrooms, waxing of floors and cleaning classrooms that aren't even going to work, not, not to be used anymore. Temporary classrooms that are not even to be utilized. Why would we spend money on that? So I'm just saying, this, these are the kind of things that with, 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 with the need for resources to, need to focus resources into our classrooms, into our students and a need to make sure that we don't create an additional liability on our hands with campuses sitting there, probably soon to be vandalized. We can't cut the grass to schools that we have kids going to. You think we're going to bother with them? And these are schools that are in our districts where, you know, we're trying to not only appreciate ourselves, but invite guests. So I register these things, you know, just saying that, good intentions, yes, but I don't know how much more we want to convolute this. So for that, I will register my objection.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman from Epe, sir, your recognition?
Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Well, it must be later than I thought because I'm just a little confused. There are people in here saying they're mad they're not cutting the grass, but then they're mad that they're cleaning the classroom. But really, my dear people of Guam, I just get the feeling they don't like the transparency because DOE, the board submitting an annual plan to the legislature is not going to stop anybody from leasing out any facility under the Guam Department of Education. You can tell we're in Halloween season because frankly, that's a scare tactic. This is very simple. Every fiscal year, they're going to tell us their plan. And it's not because we're the smartest people in the, in the hall or the smartest people in the room. It's because we serve the smartest people on this island, the people of Guam. And they can access this report that's submitted to the legislature, just like they can access all the other reports that the body and previous bodies have mandated, the agencies and the different entities to submit to the legislature, not necessarily for us to review. I'd like to see a plan, a lease utilization plan, and again, if there's no new information, then that's what they submit. But I think if we want to do our due diligence done, then we have to know what the plans And so the amendment, my dear people of Guam, it simply reads, "The Board shall provide an annual lease utilization plan showing candidate sites." For example, if that was to be submitted this fiscal year, those candidate sites would be Chief Brody Elementary School and LBJ Elementary School. Anticipated timelines. be Chief Brody Elementary School and LBJ Elementary School, anticipated timelines. We want to lease this out before the end of the fiscal year. Planned use of funds, like the sponsor said, capital improvement, repair, renovation, maintenance, but maybe a little more detail. Because yes, the bill does say that's what the funds are going to be used for, but I don't know, call me crazy, maybe we have public school parents out there who would like to get their hands on a report so they can call their senator and say, hey, they're using funds to repair this school. What about this issue at, at this school? Or why are they anticipating leasing a school that's on this list that's not closed yet? It's all about transparency, Mr. Speaker. We're not requiring the Board of Education to do anything that they don't already do. In fact, I'm very sure that they're going to be in receipt of and developing lease utilization plans for the department. All they got to do is just copy paste and, and send it on over. So it, it's very simple, my dear people of Guam. It's a sentence. It's a simple sentence. The language is sound. They're just going to submit their plan to the legislature every fiscal year, saying this is the, these are facilities that we want to lease. This is how we want to use the money and this is how long we think it's going to take to do that. I think that's absolutely reasonable and it shouldn't be made into the boogeyman, even though we are starting the Halloween season. So sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment.
On the amendment, gentlelady from Timuining, your recriminations.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, and good evening. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this amendment. I mean, really, what do we have to hide? What does DOE have to hide? Nothing. If they put this together, they don't, it doesn't seem to be a problem. It's not just transparent, it's accountable. You know, as an oversight chair of different agencies, sometimes we don't get the information we want from those agencies that we oversee. Sometimes a FOIA has to be sent out for information. A FOIA. But when we get these reports sent to this body, we have an opportunity to get that information for us because they're required to do so. If they aren't required to do so, you know how long it'll take before we realize that something is wrong? Do we, we have to wait for something like that to happen? No. You know, this is something like the committee chair of DOE would, would love to have this information to keep on top of this. You know, a utilization plan, a lease utilization plan, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Speaker, under the Chamora Land Trust is even required. Under Chamora Land Trust requires the documents that outline how leases intend to be used and awarded to them. It ensures that the land is being used productively and is in line with the goals of the Chamora Land Trust. If they have to do it, why not DOE? Lease utilization plan is proposes of the lease. It, I mean, the purpose of a lease, the development of timeline, land improvements, compliances. This is information I think everyone should want to know, especially the oversight chair of education. Would need this information. And most especially, the parents who send their kids to school who want to know what, not only the school that they're sending to, but what that administration, the, the head office of DOE is doing. Come on, we all talk about transparency, but when it comes down to it, everyone votes against it. These reports are critical for us in this body to know what's going on. It's so simple. It's an easy, easy report. So I, I stand in full support and I ask those who are going to support this measure, support transparency, accountability. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, gentlelady from Epe, ma'am. You had your hand up earlier. I saw it after her.
Jonya, Mr. Speaker, Beba San Francisco. I totally support this amendment. I think there may be, there's some misunderstanding that this is a plan that we are going to be requiring from those who are leasing the properties, but it's a plan that is supposed to be prepared by GDOE, that they are giving us their plan of which properties in their GDOE inventory they are going to lease. So by the word, "shall provide an annual lease utilization plan showing candidate sites" means GDOE facility sites, I believe. And of course, I think that's a great idea. In fact, that was my concern at the public hearing. It's like, we want them to make a firm plan because anticipated timelines, planned use of the funds, that's very basic. They're going to use it on these categories, but on exactly what? And that just gives the legislature and the public an idea of what's actually going to be achieved that fiscal year, which is what we're going to ask them over and over and in hearings, but anytime that we can get this information to the public upfront, that's a plus for everyone. By submitting these reports to the legislature, the idea is that it will be, when submitted to the legislature, they're submitted to the speaker and the speaker is going to put it on the messages and communications tab on our website. And the legislature has been known for many years, maybe 20 years now, for really having a very good website where people can find information from years ago, reports especially. And this is very important so we can compare over the months or over the years as to what they have reported. And in this case, I think it's the most important part of this is that parents, they're going to know what GDOE's plans are, that they are going to lease out the school that they think their kids should be going to, or that they know their kid's not going to anymore and they're going to see whether, in their opinion, GDOE is making good decisions. This is, this is what we want in government. We want community participation. That's the goal of open government law and so many of our laws is to inform them so that they can participate, excuse me, and make it better. This is, this is a perfect way. I really liked this amendment. I, I was hoping it would be proffered first because it was my favorite because that was my concern. I thought GDOE really has a big burden on them to really prove why they can't use these buildings themselves. And in order to do that, they should be doing that in advance and with a plan. It's hard to convince me and I think a lot of people, why we could not use Chief Brody's school and turn it into a middle school. They said, oh, the costs were prohibitive, but we had charter schools who were willing to come in and convert those schools themselves. And if they could pay for that on their budget, and then we're going to ask government agencies to come in and they can't use a kindergarten classroom or an elementary school restroom, they would have to convert those as well and they would be using taxpayer funds. And if we are going to be using taxpayer funds to convert these facilities, I can't see why GDOE, we couldn't give them that money to convert those facilities for the middle schools that they need or the high schools or whatever they need to end the burden on parents and students who are in double sessions. Or to give the students more facilities where they may be lacking at certain schools, gyms and other things. But if they are going to lease it out after they have convinced the parents and the public that that is prudent, then I think this is the least that they could do is to show their plans one fiscal year at a time at a minimum. That's a minimum, in my opinion, Mr. Speaker. So I very much support this amendment.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment? There has been an objection on the amendment? Would you like to close? Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, uh, and this amendment is important because we're asking GDOE to now be lessors of their property. And so lease utilization plans is not something that is foreign. It's actually a best practice regarding leasing of properties. I know we're all thinking that just because perhaps the assumption is that because we're leasing a property, that revenue is going to come in readily, but this is what the importance of a lease utilization plan because it also can predict costs and monitor costs. So one of the huge, the largest cost in GDOE is utilities. And so we want our schools to ensure that they're getting the revenues that they're expected or, or targeted to receive rather than realize after the fact that they spent more than received, right? Because of the, of maybe a lack of planning when it comes to lease utilization. The other important thing about this amendment is that it engages the community. So I can see that the board would seek community input regarding lease utilization plans. And this is one way to invigorate our community because it can invite certain incubator businesses to then also encourage and cultivate a, a community that's, that really wants to build a certain industry up. And so I see a lot of positive in this and I know some of my colleagues thought it was, you know, it's going to provide more problems, but I think their opportunities are there and it also provides really a best practice when it comes to leasing properties because it provides that, those, those expectations and timelines and targets, right? That are essential when we want to lease out properties to ensure that the revenues are coming in as the bill purports and intends to do. So it's really about supporting the intent of this bill and giving it more substance. And so I ask my colleagues to really think about this and, and how this can be utilized to empower GDOE and empower our community and our economy all at once. Sidozmasi.
Thank you very much. There has been an objection to the amendment. There has been an objection to the amendment. So therefore, all, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Amendment fails. That's Senator Perez, that's the last one here? Senator July, you have a couple of amendments? Yeah? You can proceed, ma'am.
Thank you again. Failure of that last amendment concerns me a little because it's what concerns me about the bill. I would have no issues with this bill at all if it was very simple and straightforward that it was going to allow GDOE to lease its unused and unneeded facilities. However, we have double sessions going on. We have calls for middle schools in Timuining for maybe 10 years now. We have calls for other facilities in, in some schools that are lacking. And so I just think the legislature has to be very careful and that GDOE has to really be very transparent in the process of, in the pursuit of revenue deeming schools unusable or unnecessary. And that's, that's what I fear is that it should be that they absolutely cannot use those facilities to benefit the kids, then they lease it. And the bill says we are going to do this to repurpose, to meet the needs of the students of the department, which is, I thought, a very, was one of those amendments that didn't pass when we were saying they're going to provide internships. That's how we meet the needs or we put in businesses that would assist in teaching different skills to the students. Or the bill also says leasing could generate revenue. So revenue is the number one purpose of this bill and I support that. If GDOE can bring in revenue to assist in its maintenance of its usable facilities, that's great. But then we have provisions where we are not going to go for maximum revenue. We're going to go for lesser revenue or we're going to allow the board to agree to lesser revenue amounts. And it seems to me contrary to why we're doing this in the first place. It's either for revenue for GDOE, but if we're trying to take care of other government agencies again on the backs of GDOE, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that's a subject of a whole other bill. If you want to lease out government of Guam properties to government of Guam agencies or if these are government of Guam properties, that, those should be handled differently. But if we're allowing GDOE to use these government properties to bring in revenue and we're, we're allowing them to do this, but it's also a burden on them to do that, then we should make them bring in revenue. And so that goes to one of my first amendments and that is the line one through three on page three to delete subsection C1 of the bill. So this section, first C says, GDOE can't go below 90% of the appraised value. Fine, that sounds standard. And then this is a big exception. It was not in the original bill that GDOE testified on. So when GDOE testified in support of this bill, it's because they were going to get to receive revenue. But this says, if we're going to lease to educational institutions or instrumentalities of the government of Guam, then GDOE can lease it for down to 60% of the appraised value. And so again, I think this is absolutely not the intent of GDOE to subsidize other agencies and that they should try to get full value for these properties. And so my amendment is to strike that paragraph so that there is no such thing as this big exception for other educational instrumentalities outside of GDOE or for government of Guam. There is again, government of Guam properties and if these are government of Guam properties, I think we're going to have to get into a discussion of which properties are going to be kept with GDOE if they're not even GDOE's property and which ones are going to be managed by the government of Guam. If that's what we need is agency buildings for government of Guam. That's a totally different story, a totally different bill. So what I think the original bill that GDOE supported in, in the public hearing, I support that, that they were going to decide which ones and be very public about it, that they didn't need and lease those for the maximum amount that they could get. And that's why the superintendent said, I'm going to look for a realtor to do this because they're experts. And I think that was the intent is just to get maximum value. So that, that's my proposal, Mr. Speaker. That's my amendment.
On the amendment to delete subsections, subsection C1. On the amendment to delete subsection C1, found on page 3, lines 1 to 3, gentlemen from Timuning, you are recognized.
Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to once again clear up the fact that the board is subject to the open government law. The board conducts all of its business in front of God and everybody, unless they go into an executive session for some reason. So everything the board does is on the record, is recorded, and I don't remember anyone in this body ever interceding or stopping the board from any action that it's taken to date. So there is full transparency, there is full accountability for everything the board does, report or no report, plan or no plan. They are a board that's been embodied by this legislature with its hybrid in nature and full autonomy to make its decisions in front of God and everybody. With this proposed amendment, it's kind of like when we were discussing the bill in another session from the beginning, on when we're talking about government, government agencies, educational institutions and the like. I just put this on the record, Mr. Speaker. Whatever exceptions you give, whatever levels of revenue you give to government, is really a fungible economic exercise. Because if it's a government entity, unless they generate their own revenue, it's another school that's subsidized by this legislature, you're basically just exchanging resources. Because whatever they're going to have to pay in the lease agreement is going to come from an appropriation. Now, yes, maybe that's, of course, that will be to the benefit of Department of Education. I'm not going to have a problem with that. But the truth is, in most cases, it's going to be taxpayer funds when we're talking about government entities, like I said, other than perhaps autonomous agencies. So I'm not saying I object to it, I'm just saying it's fungible. Are you going to give the government a discount? If the government gets a discount, if a charter school gets a discount, does it mean that they use that revenue more internally within their own operation? Or does that mean they pay it to DOE, so that DOE now, for facilities and maintenance and the like, has that additional revenue? Chances are, if it's a charter school, they would be looking at the revenue for the same purpose, because I'm sure they'll be responsible for maintenance and operation of the facility. If it's a government entity that for some reason is a line agency or an operation of the government that gets a subsidy from the legislature, then once again, it's a fungible amount. So what does the discount mean? Maybe half a dozen or six of one, could be the same. So I'm not necessarily objecting to it, I'm just wanting to say that, really, it's to the benefit, yes, of Department of Education. But regardless, in most cases, if not all, it would be revenue coming from an appropriation from the legislature, from the government of Guam. That's just my observation. But I wanted to make it clear that in no way, whether or not a report is provided to this legislature, the actions of that board are fully transparent, transparent and fully accountable to the open government laws. Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Gentlemen from Baragada, you had your hand up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, when we entertained this bill in the July session, Mr. Speaker, there was a lot of, you know, one of the big concerns at the time was, there wasn't a floor. Everybody kept saying, we, you know, you're, so it could be 0%, it could be 1%. We debated on it, and then there was a motion to move it back to committee. And so when we brought it back to committee, you know, that was one of the main things that we wanted to address, because that was one of the main concerns. And so we established the floor, and this was the amendment that was, you know, placed or, you know, or this was the amendment made to the bill. I mean, I don't know if I'm going to, you know, I don't know if I object or support this amendment, because again, this was, you know, this was probably the main reason I supported, you know, as a committee chair, and when they asked me, we wanted to move it back, and we said, yeah, let's move it back and let's discuss what that floor is going to be. And so I'm just confused, because the same person who, you know, the same, you know, senator who is, who proffered this amendment was one of the ones who wanted to push for some kind of floor, Mr. Speaker. So I'm not sure, you know, I guess, I mean, and even in the, in the previous amendment that was made by the senator from Baragada in regards to, you know, establishing the fees and regulations pursuant to the AAA, I, I, I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record, Mr. Speaker, because really, as these things popped up, I was a little confused, because again, that was one of the reasons we asked the, you know, our colleagues in the July session to support this amendment, but I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, gentlelady from Baragada, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, it is an improvement from the previous, I guess, version of it. But, and I was thinking, what is the amount? What is the appraised value of these buildings? These buildings are 50-plus years old. Are we talking about, you know, what is the actual value? So I think when we're talking about in percentages, it doesn't give us the full picture. And to, it almost seems arbitrary at this point to think of a minimum amount, right? So, you know, before we even talk about minimums, I think we need to figure out what the value is, and will they really get revenue from this? Because what if the value of the building is, what, $50,000? You know, we are not going to get a lot back, and it's not probably going to pay for the costs, which again, goes back to the lease utilization. So I think that, I think this amendment at least addresses that concern that, you know, maybe we need to go back and think about the value of these properties before we move on with this bill. I mean, I do want, in the interest of making sure that GDOE gets revenue, maybe I can, if I can ask the sponsor of the bill, does he have any information regarding values and appraisals of GDOE properties, or if he can provide some information in that regard? Because 90%, percentages don't tell us the full picture.
The author, you, would you, how would you respond? Would you like to respond to that?
Was there a question to me? Oh, no, there was a question to me? There's a question in reference to the value of the property? Well, let's look at it this way. How many of my colleagues here are renting in Timuning? Let's start with that. And if you, and if you, and if you are, the approximate value per square foot is three to about $4 a square foot, but did you pay for office space? So just picture if you, if you're renting a school, you give a rough estimate, the school's maybe what? Gosh, $20,000 square feet? I mean, it's a, it's a big campus. And when you're renting in Timuning, because that, we're talking about two places in Timuning, okay? LBJ and Carp and Chi Rudi. So when you want to take a look at 60%, when you rent in Timuning, you pay for common area fees, you got maintenance fees, there's a bunch of stuff. And when the board, or correction, yeah, when DOE establishes fees and regulations, so if you want to talk to 60%, and then when you want to worry about if charter schools is going to, is going to lease it, that can be brought up with the budget guy. My colleague Senator Wayne said, hey, we need to reduce the amount of money we give charter schools that are leasing schools. And say, no, you're not going to get the money, because this is what we know you'll pay. Because on the average, there's campus right now, there's nobody paying, and it's a charter school, and nobody's complaining about that. But we're going to complain about this other thing. If you don't know which charter school, just think about it, okay? But what was the question, Mr. Speaker, so I can figure out what my answer was, because I wasn't...
Do you have any idea as to what the appraised value is of properties within GDOE?
I'm not an appraiser, I'm not registered, I'm sorry. Thank you. I wish I was, because then I would give an answer.
Thank you. Does that answer you?
Appreciate the response, but again, it maybe doesn't bring clarity as regards to percentages. I know this is an improvement upon the original bill, original, not the original bill, but one of the amendments during the debate of the bill. But again, you know, what is, what does the value? I guess, yeah, it does, it does reduce the amount of money that GDOE can attain. And, you know, again, revenues is not, is just one part of it. We want to ensure that cost depreciation too is factored into that. So I, I do support this amendment, because at least it maximizes the amount of revenue that GDOE can receive, so that they can then ensure their schools are, meet sanitary requirements, which is what is one of the, you know, the goals, right? To ensure that our students and our community, educational community is in an environment that's safe to have, to be in. We know mold is an issue, so, and especially on Guam, right? And so I think that to try to diminish the value of what we're receiving or what GDOE is receiving off the bat is, yeah, I think it's, it's an issue, because they need every dollar they can get. What they have now in ARPA funds to upgrade the schools is not enough. It only, I think, went as far as 12 schools, and there's 40, 40 schools, 40-plus schools. So, you know, I think that really is the goal that we should think about, is how are we, how are we going to subsidize GDOE through these lease agreements? Because they are truly in need, they are the ones that are truly in need of, of the revenue, because our government coffers oftentimes fall short of capital improvement projects and any revenue generating activity, we should maximize that opportunity. Sido Massey.
Mr. Speaker, just a little point of information.
What is your point of information?
The reason why this was put in the bill, the amendment, because when it was referred back, the biggest concern was that they may charge zero. So the committee chair said, and you know, I talked to him, says, well, what would be a reasonable amount for government entities, which the budget man can control their money they get to pay rent? Same thing with charter schools and anybody else in GovGuam. It was to prevent zero charge. That was all it's for, and not, and not 100% free, you know, and not 100%. So that's the only reason that was put in. But if the author wants to make it be 90, then let's just remember if anybody's renting for free or getting it for free, and then we move on. And that's just, that point of information, nothing more. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Gentlemen from Epanza, you recognize.
Sido Massey, Mr. Speaker, for the chance to rise in support of the amendment, and good evening to the people of Guam. I hope you had a good dinner. Definitely rise in support of the amendment, and thank you for jogging my memory to some of my colleagues, as we did discuss this bill on the floor, and I believe the concern at the time was not just that some of our colleagues, through amendments being proffered, were trying to allow the ability for charter schools to rent from GDOE for a dollar. It was that they were injecting into the bill this special rate for a charter school. That was, for me, the big issue was, we were, again, if the true intent of the bills allowed GDOE to lease their unused facilities, then let's let them lease their unused facilities and quit putting in all these caveats and barriers. And that was the, the big issue, was you had a charter school that was out there looking for a place, so they've since found one, and there was an interest, I'm pretty sure, from some of the colleagues to support that charter school, and they tried to do it by introducing an amendment that had no floor. So I believe the language was up to whatever percentage, and I know, I forget who exactly brought it up, but I think it was somebody on this side that brought up and said, hey, this means that they could run, they could end up leasing it out for a dollar. And so it was like problem on top of problem. And then the strike three for me is, if you go back to the public hearing, superintendent Swanson, and I think the good senator from Baragada mentioned this, Superintendent Swanson testified in support of the bill, because it didn't have anything in there about, we're going to twist DOE's arm behind its back and force them to rent our favorite charter school, even though that's an unfair advantage to that charter school versus the other charter schools who pay rent, who don't get 60% off or whatever. And that's why he supported the bill, because there wasn't anything in there about GovGuam entities get a discount, charter schools get a discount. And if you look at the finding and recs from the committee report, there's nothing in there that says, hey, yeah, we should put this in here to allow the charter schools to get a special deal, or to allow GovGuam agencies to get a special deal. Because I just want to remind the people of Guam, and I'm pretty sure they didn't forget, but, and nobody given GDOE a special deal. In fact, they got a bill, they got a bill for the help they got to help open the schools. I don't think they got a discount. And so, again, for me, if we're really trying to give GDOE the ability and the authority to lease out their facilities, which makes a lot of sense, especially given the uncertainty with the GovGuam revenues, since we're, we handed out, you know, a 1% VPT reduction, you've got that, then you've also got everything happening on the federal funding side, the impending dismantling of the U.S. Department of Education, for example. And I know the thought has been, it's a little delusional if you ask me, the thought has been that, oh, if USDAO was giving GDOE $600 million, and that just means GDOE is going to get $600 million, and we're just going to spend it however. That's not what's going to happen. We don't even know how the, the end process of the dismantling of the U.S. Department of Education is going to be. We don't know, but I'll venture to say that they're guaranteed not going to give us the same lump sum, whatever we're getting. You know, things are getting cut, they're getting chainsawed. So it absolutely makes sense to give GDOE the ability to generate revenues outside of their appropriations by leasing their unused facilities. And today, those unused facilities are Chief Brody Elementary and LBJ Elementary. Tomorrow? Next year? Who knows? It, they could be talking about closing Ocean View Middle School again, they could be talking about closing Harriet Truman again. Because we know the enrollment's down, we know the cross leveling, the maximization, all of those efforts, the end result was to close schools. So we can anticipate that it's very likely that more schools will close. And we have two that are available for lease right now, and I don't see a long line of people trying to lease these properties. So I just want to ensure, and I hope my colleagues would agree, that if we're trying to give GDOE the power to pad their pocket to benefit our public schools and our public school students, and they're going to need that help. Remember, they said the budget that, that you guys overrode the other day is disastrous, disastrous, a disaster for the Guam Department of Education. So they're going to need the money. But what's the point? If we're going to tell them, go and lease your facilities, but if it's our party, give them a big discount, or if it's a GovGuam agency, don't worry, the finance committee is going to take care of it. So I just wanted to just raise those points, Mr. Speaker, because it kind of seems like we're getting away from the intent of the bill, which I absolutely support. GDOE needs the funds, we have to support our public schools. They got shortchanged in the budget, they said it's a disaster. So if we're trying to help them out of this disaster... So if we're trying to help them out of this disaster and help them stave off even more disasters that you can see coming down the road, then we have to give them the ability, the authority, and most importantly, the autonomy, to be able to dictate the terms of these leases. How much they're gonna charge to use these facilities. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senator wishing to speak on the amendment? On the amendment? Ma'am, would you like to close on the amendment?
Thank you to my colleagues for their thoughts on this amendment and hopefully their support. Again, of course, this language where it says "shall not be leased below 60%" is much better than it previously was in previous sessions where it could have been zero or $1 or anything up to 60%. And so this is, this is a minimum. That's better than zero. I agree. However, again, the intent of my amendment is to remove this exception for any other educational institutions that are leasing from GDOE or any government of Guam entity leasing from GDOE is because GDOE said in the hearing that they are assessing every school to update their lists of what properties they have, who is title under. Some of these might be under GDOE, some of these we know are not. And so they're going to decide that first, and then they're going to decide which ones are available for lease. And so when they figure out which ones are available for lease that are actually in their jurisdiction, then I just think they should get maximum value for it. That's what we're going for here, and let's give them that opportunity. So I hope that that's clear. Leaving this in the bill means GDOE may get less. We're going to pay less to GDOE from the government. But I believe that the GDOE students, the teachers, they should not get less. Not now. They should get as much as we possibly can give them. They should get as much as they can possibly get from leasing out their facilities. And if we are going to subsidize any other government agency to lease these facilities, then we should be subsidizing GDOE more to convert these facilities to their own use for middle schools and other needs. So I hope I can get the support of my colleagues to delete paragraph one.
Thank you. I'm not sure whether there was an objection to this. Is there an objection? There is an objection to... Okay? There is an objection to the amendment.
Mr. Speaker, could I just ask who objected? I can't see.
Right. Senator Waines? Okay? There was an objection to the amendment. So therefore, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Amendment fails. Ma'am, you have another amendment?
Again, that's very concerning because I think it's very clear now that the bill is really under the guise of "we're going to give something to GDOE," when really, that's not the goal. The goal is to give less to GDOE, and let's maybe take care of a charter school. And if I could ask the author to yield to a question, he's been implying by his comments that there is some school that is in a GDOE facility for free? Some other educational institution? And I just want to know if that's correct.
Okay, he's not, he's not in the session right now. Let's take a recess.
Would the Chair of Education yield to that question?
Would you yield to that question, sir?
Oh, sure. I think she's referring, it may be Guahan that he was referring to. That's in a a rent-free facility right now.
Guahan?
The charter school.
Is in a GDOE facility?
I think it's part of the lease, the Tizen. There, it's the, Mr. Chair.
Can you, can you please repeat the question?
Yes, I just want to know if it's correct that there is a charter school in a GDOE facility that does not pay GDOE rent?
Yeah, that exists for the past eight years.
Would you like to yield to that question?
Sure, I mean, Guahan Academy.
Thank you.
For the past eight years, and that was well-known. Because after the last administration left, they allowed them to stay there. And that's a DOE facility. And there's nothing wrong with them getting it for free. Really, there's nothing. It's been helping them.
I just want to confirm that the government of Guam is paying, that the charter school in that facility is not paying for, they're not paying towards the lease. They're not, if they're not paying GDOE, they're not paying the landlord either?
There's no lease.
Would you like to yield to the question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Let's stick to the protocol, please.
Well, the Chairman of Education said it's a lease.
Oh, it is? I don't, I don't think it's a lease. It's never been a lease, Mr. Speaker. And I was on the board, and then I was the oversight of appropriations, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does that answer your question, ma'am?
It's confusing because if we're talking about a leased property, somebody's paying the lease. And I just wanted to confirm, is it the charter school paying the lease? Or is it GDOE paying the lease? And I just wanted that to be clear. Again, this bill says we're going to allow them to lease out their facilities, not to give them away for free, and to get some value that they can use for maintenance. Otherwise, this is, this is a hoax. GDOE has to take care of its teachers, its students first, and its facilities. If we are going to subsidize any other public entity, then why aren't we giving GDOE the funds to convert its old facilities into usable facilities? Why are we making them go this roundabout way to go get revenue in order to do that conversion? My other amendment is on lines 12 to 13, page 2, to delete subsection A3 of the bill, which currently lists who is going to be on the procurement team that's going to handle these lease agreements. And the team is the superintendent, the chief financial officer. And I'm trying to delete three members of the Guam Board of Education as selected by the chairperson of the Board of Education. And the final member is the chief procurement officer of GDOE. All these other members of this procurement team make sense. These are people trained to handle finances and procurement. And they are the ones who are doing all the work of the schools. They're doing the implementation of the policy of the board. The board is a policy board, and it should be conducting its policy as opposed to this implementation, the execution. So that would be my amendment.
On the amendment, to lines 12 and 13 on page 2, to delete subsection 3, which reads, "Three members of the Guam Board of Education as selected by the chairperson of the Board of Education." On that amendment, are there any senators wishing to speak on that amendment? Gentlemen from Gigo? You recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a little bit of clarity on the issue of the facilities in Tizen. And it was mentioned by one of my colleagues, I think from Baragada, or, right? The question is, what campuses is owned by DOE? Or is it owned by another GovGuam entity? In Tizen, combination? It's not old DOE property. That's why they don't pay lease. But anyway, moving along, on the issue of this amendment, three board members to be eliminated. It started with five, then the amendment was to bring it to three. And then who do we blame when there's something messed up at DOE? The group that hired the superintendent, the board? And we're not gonna make them part of the procurement? The group that's gonna get involved? In leasing campuses? I have, I'm not comfortable with that. And I was on the board before, for six years. And we got involved with what was going on in the school. Then things changed, and the board has been restricted on many things they can't get involved in. But this will keep them involved. We come three of five. So you want to get rid of three. So they'll be down to four, right? Am I correct, or is it no? It'll be superintendent, chief financial officer? Yeah, that's it. And the three board members, so five. It's down to two. So the two can look at each other, and the chief financial officer will look at the superintendent, and he'll say, "Boss, what do you think?" I mean, folks, this is real, okay? That's why we have board members involved. Otherwise, let's identify then somebody else that can be involved to bring some balance. And that's the famous thing that my colleague from Baragada would say. We want to bring some accountability. If you don't want the board members, at least change it to somebody else. So they can watch what they're doing. So they make sure they do it right. Because zero bar, otherwise with jurisdiction, double session, so forth and so forth, and then, it makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. And I object to it, basically. I mean, we did from five to three, now three to zero? Taman tazat, tau taki grup?
Thank you very much, sir. Gentlemen from Baragada, sir, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, you know, I, you know, as part of the... Sorry, my brain like shut down at 6 o'clock. But the reason we amended the, you know, it started with five during the, one of the amendments that was proffered during the last session was to bring it down to three, so we incorporated that into the bill. But you know, when we talk about, and you know, the previous speaker from Gigo is right. I mean, even if we, you know, the way the board operates, even in their current structure, there is, you know, they have a finance committee, which includes the DFAS of the department. And then you have board members that are part of this committee. So I don't see any harm. I mean, you look at the ad hoc committee that was just created to address the double session, right? You don't necessarily just have teachers in there. You have board members in there that have never taught in the department, but they're part of the ad hoc committee for the double session, to address the double session. So, you know, I don't see any harm in having board members. Ultimately, they're the, not necessarily governing, but most of the decisions come from the board. And so I as well object to this amendment. I don't see any harm in, I mean, I think five was a little extreme, but I think three is reasonable. But you know, and so I oppose this amendment. And thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this amendment.
Thank you. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment? Gentlemen from Epanse, you recognize?
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, for the chance to rise in support of the amendment. I know there are different committees under the board. I'm just not sure if there, if there's any instance where you have board members sitting in on an active procurement. I just worry that it would create a potential for conflict of interest. As we know, in just recent history, board members have been approached by different entities seeking to lease out GDOE facilities. And this was brought up in the board meeting setting. So I do understand some of the concern of the author from Gigo. I just think if we're talking procurement, which is what this entity does, they're gonna be responsible for actually doing the leasing and the procurement of this. And I think that's a function best left to the people in the Department of Education who handle those kind of things, who have the expertise. I'm very sure that they're gonna end up presenting this to the board anyway when it's finalized, sir. So I just wanted to rise in support of the amendment despite the objections from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment? Gentleman from Baragada, ma'am, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment, and I want to raise a concern because in our current statute, it states the roles of the board. And the role of the board, as with any legislative bodies, to act collectively and not individually. And any board member shall report to Eles, Latour, and Guahan any potential or alleged violation of this subsection. The board shall not interfere in or micromanage the affairs of the department or schools within the department. So it is clear to me that the board is not involved in the operations of GDOE, and they're a policy board. And so I re, I I also agree with the retiring speaker that by inserting the board members in the procurement, that it is in contravention to what's in current statute. And this is a substantive change that needs public hearing in itself. So, you know, whether, you know, what this body decides, I think that this goes against what is in law right now. And it requires a public hearing. So if I can ask the legal to make a, if I can get a moment's recess to ask legal if this is germane or substantive change to the bill?
I'm gonna rule that it's not substantive change to the rule.
Or is, it requires a public hearing because it's it's changing a part of law that wasn't originally there? Yeah, so, I mean, there's a conflict in the law in this bill itself.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker. This was in, this was in the bill when we had the public hearing.
I stand corrected, I stand corrected, sir. Yeah, so, but I think that this hasn't been fully vetted. And because the bill was meant to authorize GDOE to lease, but this is also changing the role of the board from a policymaking board to one that is involved in operations. And that was not addressed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay? On the amendment, Senator, would you, would you like to be able to close on the amendment? So proceed.
Thank you, and I thank my colleagues for raising their points on this amendment. And especially the previous speaker, that's exactly the point of the amendment. It's to make the law, this bill, consistent with existing law, that the board decides the policy. And by this bill, we are telling them parameters of policies that they can decide. They are going to decide in the end, after the list is compiled, which of those are going to be out for lease? Which of these schools do we agree are going to be closed? Which of these rules and regs do we approve these or not? They're gonna do all of that, which is policy setting. And then they're gonna give it to their staff at DOE to take care of it. That's how they handle. We don't want the board involved in hiring at DOE or procurement at DOE. We want them setting the policy for hiring and the policy for procurement. And this is a unique procurement, so they will have much discretion to establish that policy because it's not fully established yet. This is new, something new for DOE and the government. So if we're going to proceed in that, then we have three members still on this procurement team, the superintendent, the chief finance officer, and the chief procurement officer, the experts, to handle the, after the board sets the policy, to actually... The experts to handle the, after the board sets the policy, to actually implement that, to make sure, to rate those who are bidding. We don't bring the governor in to rate the bidders. We set a team to do that. We don't set the legislature in to rate any bidders in the government. We are setting policy, just like the board does. And we stay out of the hiring and the procurement itself. And we leave that to staff at the agencies that are trained to do that. And that's all. And I don't think anybody should object to this if they understand what, what, how much power the board has in setting the policy. Or what they're expected to do right now. And that is stick to policy, give that direction, and let them implement it to the best of their abilities. And then when the procurement is selected or the award is determined, I'm pretty sure they're going to bring that back to the board for approval. That's all. It's just the handling of the lease agreements shall be handled by a procurement team. That is employees of the Department of Education, not by elected policy officials to handle lease agreements. I really think this is the way to keep any kind of, um, you know, questions about whether we've got expertise going on in there, whether we've got, um, conflicts of interest going on, special favors going on. Get rid of all of that. Stick to policymakers. You set your policy and then, and then they implement it as fairly as possible. And that's all we really want is for businesses who are going to bid. We want this to be fair. So that, that is really the goal. And I really hope, you know, the bill is concerning now. We're giving special favors, not full value to DOE. We are trying to influence the selection process, I think, by not letting, after we set a policy, an expert team do the selection. Just, um, and I think this is how we get maximum value for the Department of Education. And if that is the true goal of the bill, as it says it is, then I'm really wondering why the objections. So I, I hope that they will, um, support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, there was an objection to the amendment. There was an objection to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Amendment fails. Okay. Any other senators wishing to speak on the, on the bill as amended? Gentlemen from Tumuning, you recognize?
Sidozmasia, Mr. Speaker, I just want to make a few, uh, comments on the bill. You know, I respect the fact that these amendments have been proffered. I respect the fact that the work has been put in to allow this bill to go forward, to provide these opportunities. And you know, Mr. Speaker, I just want to speak particularly to this issue again. You know, the notation about setting the floor, that's fine in terms of government, charter schools, government operations. But you know, Mr. Speaker, setting it at 60%? Like was talked about earlier, for most market values within regard to most of these properties and the size of these properties, is going to yield significant revenue. Once again, I'll reiterate, I guess I'm saying it because I'm the budget chair, which is going to come from the government over to DOE. Yes, good, good opportunity, no question about it. But let's talk about avoided costs, Mr. Speaker. And that's why I brought up the fact that what are we going to do? And in fact, the current board chair had mentioned that, saying, "I hope we get some opportunities to move forward, even if it's government entities that are going to move in, even if we're going to be able to get some revenue from that." Because other than that, we're going to have to start getting contracts to cut grass and maintain buildings that we're not using. What sense does that make? What sense does that make? None at all. None at all. And so my point is this, Mr. Speaker. The framework is here in this bill. This is not designed to, as a giveaway. It's designed to have opportunities, both commercial and within our government, for buildings that are otherwise going to sit there and rot. We can't even take care of the buildings that we currently have that are occupied. And yet we want to chastise ourselves for trying to make sure that, yes, highest and best use. But who, who are the kids that are going to the charter schools? Our kids. You know? And where does the money come from when we put the $7,800 per pupil? From the government? To educate our kids? Those kids who are veiling of the opportunities for tomorrow? For, yes, partnering with businesses, a lot of them. Most of these charter schools are already hooked up with businesses. And their career tech ed. And the things that they're doing. So the envisioning that we had here on this floor is already envisioning. But, Mr. Speaker, for me, we start out with the basis of, the board has made transparent decisions in the open to say, "We have to do this." Because if we're running a school at 50% of the students, it doesn't make any sense. We have these staffing requirements where we can cross level and bring folks into other schools to help our kids and, and take care of our ratios. I think this is one of the reasons why we've had the lowest in terms of starting school with teachers and the like and being able to outfit with faculty. And we're talking about this disastrous, disastrous, disastrous. We're going to have a quarterly every time with education and then it's next fiscal year to find out if they have 10, 15, 20, $50 million in lapses. The board chair was even on the radio this morning, Mr. Speaker, saying that they're getting their money turned around in 24 hours now without an appropriation from this legislature. Because our good chair sat down with financial people and said, "Let's try to work this out." And he did a great job. And save the government shutdown. They're getting their money reimbursed at 24 hours, Mr. Speaker. Doesn't it work when we put our heads together and say, "Let's do this"? And yourself and others who went to Washington DC to make pleas, "Help our education"? And it's working without one dime appropriation additional from this legislature. And during the budget hearing, millions of dollars in lapses. And we'll see what it is when OFP puts out its report of what the end, final price tag was in lapses. Mr. Speaker, we're not trying to create a for-profit situation. Yes, we will help and we want to help. But this bill is sound the way it's structured. I believe we will get some businesses that see opportunities to make proposals to the government. But even that, Mr. Speaker, I guarantee you will come at avoided costs because there's going to be a lot of investment requirement, as one of our retiring speakers said on the floor here. What are the conditions of these schools? What are the values? Like I mentioned earlier, Mr. Speaker, we're going to call for, when we sit down with the board and find out if they're working on classrooms that aren't being utilized. And I was told by one board member, "Raise them." Why would you continue to put money into a temporary building? You're not even operating anymore. One-time cost to level it and get it done. Don't wax that floor. So we're getting to the territory right now, Mr. Speaker, where the opportunity of this, going forward with this bill that I think has a, a good framework is the due diligence of this body helping the board who asked for this as well. Help us at least make sure we don't have these albatrosses sitting out there that we have to go out and take care of. Because I'm sure the community will start rising up and saying, "Hey, you know, don't let these things just become nuisances. If you're not going to use it, do something with it. Even if you give it to an entity for 60% of the value and get the revenue for your other facility's maintenance, which is smart. But at 100%, sometimes, Mr. Speaker, there might be even an ability for the school to say, "Never mind, I can go somewhere else." So it just doesn't make sense to convolute it. Let's take this good idea, Mr. Speaker, move it forward. If there are impediments, if there are things that need to be improved, like I said, these things will be done because they have to be done pursuant to the open government law. They have to be done pursuant to procurement. They have to be done pursuant to the AAA process that we put in place. So even this is not going to be overnight, Mr. Speaker. So I hope we trip over ourselves to help and not trip over ourselves to impede. Mr. Speaker, I think this is a good bill. I think that's a sound bill. Is it perfect? Once again, we'll have to always talk about our lack of perfection. Because it's true, God save us. But I think we have a good product here, Mr. Speaker. And for that reason, I will support it and I will vote in the affirmative. And I will trust the board that they're trying to do the right thing with all of the complications that they have on their table. Yet, at least the schools that they do have that are requiring inspection continue to go from Ds and not passing to Cs and Bs and As. Because there's a commitment here, Mr. Speaker. So I support the bill and I hope our colleagues will as well. Sidozmasia.
Thank you very much. On the bill as amended, gentlemen from Talafu, who you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to offer comments on Bill 70. Many school districts throughout the nation are today faced with the need to finance the construction, renovation, or repair of public school facilities, among other things. In 2025, Mr. Speaker, there's been a tectonic shift in federal education policy. School districts across America are having to move with the times. Guam is no different. We cannot rely anymore on what has been viewed by education leaders across our island and many in this room as federal school dollar entitlement. When we were given a chance to infuse these particular resources into our public schools over the past 30 years, in all due respect, we collectively squandered them. In 2025, we are now forced to go back to the basics. Funds are limited. The usage of education funds from any source must have a purpose. The taxpayers of Guam are watching each and every step with this. We will not waste them today, Mr. Speaker, because we cannot afford to. I stand in support of Bill 70. It takes a bold step forward, not a step backward, at this critical juncture in the delivery of elementary and secondary educational school services. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the amended version directing revenue earned through any lease established through the bill's provisions. And there was a lot of changes made. And I think we were focused on maybe brick and mortar, but there are a number of big facilities, outdoor facilities, a finance auditorium, underutilized facilities across Guam that can generate money to support the entirety of the education system in Guam. According to this DOE School Facility Master Plan issued in May of 2022, the department had 40 operational public school sites, six high schools, eight middle schools, 26 elementary schools, and six of the schools are leased. GDOE is wholly responsible for facility management at 34 of those schools' total inventory. Again, over 3.3 million square feet with an estimated replacement value of $817 million. Some of the provisions that were made in the amendments today, uh, for this bill, I'm for some of them, uh, some, I'm on the fence on a bunch of the other ones. Because they're already managing this and we just are just looking at maybe one or two schools and not looking at other facilities that are under their inventory. All of this, Mr. Speaker, while the student population on Guam's public school system continues to decline. FY 2023, 25,00648. They lost 4% that year from the previous year. With that said, when we think about as these, some of these schools are coming offline and they could be become available for rent, really a policy, and I would agree, must be implemented to maximize the use of these particular government assets. And Bill 70 is that policy. It really is a good start, Mr. Speaker, to infuse funds to support education. Yes, I think much of the focus was probably on the brick and mortar, a school, maybe a school bathroom here or there to maybe accommodate something else. But again, outdoor facilities and other assets of the Department of Education can be helpful if it's, um, underutilized especially. I appreciate there's ongoing discussion among the leadership of GDOE and the board on this idea of generating revenue from unused GDOE properties. Again, leasing to outside organizations. My position has been that these public properties should also be used perhaps for other government agencies, and I think many in this room would agree. Some of them don't even have permanent homes, Mr. Speaker. And they're costing taxpayers an increasingly, uh, an increasing amount of money every year for rent, as we just found out in the Budget Act. And I want to point our attention, Mr. Speaker, Office, to the Office of Public Accountability. They issued an OPA audit in January of 2017. This is, uh, report number 1702, that analyzes government of Guam leases. The report found that in just a little over a decade, the government of Guam nearly doubled its annual cost for leasing commercial space, going from $6.8 million in FY 2004 to $12.5 million in FY 2015. Now, since 2005, the OPA has urged the legislature to begin evaluating whether or not it is feasible to initiate long-term planning to acquire or build facilities to house government entities for the future. In that time, Mr. Speaker, uh, yourself and several of our colleagues were involved in two, at least two administrations to build facilities. I mean, I could go down the list, my colleague from Tumuning on the right, on how many he shepherded himself, you, uh, and the expansion of facilities in Guam and others in this room. Mr. Speaker, there's an opportunity before us to prioritize the use of potentially available GDOE facilities for other public services. Again, a good starting point for us as policymakers. But also a good starting point for decision makers at all levels to develop a pathway, a plan to transition government operations perhaps into these government assets moving forward. If approved, again, Bill 70 really allows GDOE and the board to determine whether any of its facilities, which may be decommissioned in the immediate future, may meet the space and infrastructure requirements of agencies that are currently renting. and infrastructure requirements of agencies that are currently renting from the private sector, and there are quite a number of them. But I think even in the public hearing, they, there's always that overlooked, I'm, I'm only looking at a classroom, a door, a bathroom, there's other facilities from north to south that if they're not being utilized or can perhaps generate more revenues to support the educational needs of our school kids, then I think there should be a chance to do it. And Bill 70, Mr. Speaker, perhaps is that way, and like I mentioned before, the way forward. Thank you for the opportunity to add my observations on the record, and I ask the good senator from GIGO and the author of the bill to add me as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill as amended, go ahead, man, you had your hand up.
Yes, I have to point of information. I just want to clarify something that, that I inquired about, and I don't want any confusion. So GDOE is not subsidizing any charter school right now. The rent for GACS and the rent for the GDOE headquarters is paid directly by the government of Guam and the taxpayers in that front part of the budget where we pay the debt service. We pay that in the beginning before we get money for appropriations. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill as amended? Any other senators wishing to speak on the bill as amended? No other sen, oh, gentleman from Tumuning, you recognize?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. You know, tonight, I stand in full support, of course, Bill 70-38. And colleagues, let's, you know, let's cut through the chase there. GovGuam has proven time and time again that it cannot maintain its facilities, and that's not my opinion. That's a fact. And while our buildings, of course, sit abandoned, rotten away, we're shelling out millions of taxpayer dollars every single year to lease private office space. That's wasteful, and our people deserve a lot better, Mr. Speaker. This bill is simple. It solves two problems at once. First, it takes the burden of maintenance off GDOE for schools that they no longer use. Second, it gives those very same properties a purpose, either to generate revenue through leases or to house other government agencies, so we can stop the bleeding of money into the pockets of private landlords. If you need to prove, Mr. Speaker, of why this matters, just look at FQ Sanchez. When it was left abandoned, vandal stripped it, bare, copper wire stolen, classrooms were gutted, the buildings left to crumble into the ground. What could have been preserved, of course, and repurposed came, became a total eyesore, and now taxpayers, taxpayers are on the hook for even more money, Mr. Speaker. This is the cause, of course, of inaction. Colleagues, why is this body so afraid of public-private partnerships? We act as if innovation is a dirty word. PPPs are not about giving away assets. They're about leveraging them smartly so the people of Guam get a return on their investment. Bill 78-38, it's not just common sense, Mr. Speaker, it's overdue. Let's stop, of course, wasting taxpayer dollars. Let's stop letting schools rot, and let's finally put our resources to work for the people we serve. So I urge, again, my colleagues to pass this measure. I mean, full support. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill as amended, on the bill as amended, any other senators wishing to speak? On the bill as amended, no other senators? Senator Sin Augustine, you can close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just want to comment a little bit, oh. Go sponsor. Okay, I'd like to make one motion, one amendment, to add co-sponsors onto the bill.
You can proceed.
Oh, no, Senator, you are co-sponsor already. Twice, okay, and even Senator Lohan, to add Senator Lohan. And, and Senator Gumatalto. And if anybody else wants to, please raise your hand. Don't feel free to raise your hand. Otherwise, I think we pretty much call everybody. Just add Senator Lohan and Senator Gumatalto.
I apologize, the standing was, he has to be on the floor. There he is. Okay, he's here.
Oh, you have to be present. He's present now.
Okay.
Okay.
On the, on the motion to add senators' co-sponsors, any objection? No objections, so ordered.
Mr. Speaker, now I'll close, but I want to comment on one of the amendment before I officially close, just a comment. You know, there's one amendment that was struck down and failed in reference to the 60%. You know what the beauty of what our colleague from Bargada did with the fees and rules and regulation? It can avoid 60%. It can actually force the 90, because the, on the bill, it shall not be less, least below 60%. Could stay at 90, it could be 100, it's up to them. Fee, the rules and regulations will cover that. But moving along, thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, for the discussion on this bill. I just want to underline that Bill 70-38 aims to benefit our students, schools, and the future of our island, ensuring that idle facilities are no longer wasted, exactly as our colleague from Tumuning brought up about FQ Sanchez, and that they become sources for reinvestment and improvement across our schools and a resource for other entities to utilize. By granting DOE the authority to lease unused or underutilized school facilities, we give them an opportunity to keep the facilities active so they don't fall into a state of disrepair or neglect, as one of my colleagues have identified in Tumuning that's happening now. It's almost matching the school that's active, the grass. The lease payments will be available to the department and will be expended by resolution of the board. In this bill, we set up the mechanism to ensure the best outcome for the lease negotiation. No bill is ever perfect, so we can always come back to the table and make the amendments. Mr. Speaker, this bill may not solve every challenge that our schools face, but it provides another tool to help them move forward. It exhibits creativity, sustainability, and readiness to change to accommodate our students' needs fundamentally. It symbolizes our resolve to never let up on strengthening the state of our schools and an outside, and outside the classroom. So today, I ask this body to stand with me. And more importantly, with our students, by passing Bill 70-38COR, together, we can take an underutilized property and turn them into brighter futures for our children. Por favor, azude fama conta. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I ask my colleagues, and I move this to the third reading, please.
There's a motion to move Bill 70-38COR as amended and further amended by the Committee on Education, and then further amended on the floor to the third reading. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Colleagues, it's 9:53. We're going to go ahead and recess for tonight and be back here at 8:15 tomorrow morning. 8:15 tomorrow morning. We're in recess. Thank you.